So you can maximize that.
And then there's X.
I Xed out, so now you should be good. So wait one minute, is there anybody coming in?
Yeah, all those people are there.
I'm sorry, on Zoom?
Yes, of course.
They just come right in.
Yeah, I'm actually here because Michelle deleted my meetings.
You were disabled.
Did you hear that? I know. Michelle deleted my meeting that I made months ago, and I had to resend it all on accident. But at 2:10, she comes up and says, "It's not yours if you made that meeting." I said, "I make the meeting every day after the meeting." So I had to resend to like 100 people.
Oh, so there's somebody in the way.
Yeah, I know. Well, I shouldn't have to now that I changed this. Can you wait one now?
Yeah.
He probably was plugged in as we went.
Can you hear us? Can you hear us? You're muted.
We're trying to test our sound. Can you nod if you can hear us?
He's muted. She can't hear. She does need it.
So you know, if there's ever a problem, you should always check it. I don't remember which, but this was turned off the other day.
Really?
When we went to have our meeting.
Okay, yeah, I never touched that.
So I think there may have been a blackout, a power surge or something.
That makes sense.
Because everything was shut down.
Yeah, that makes sense. It was so funny. So I come down here, I'm like, bro, 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 bro.
Yeah, you got that set up.
Yeah, so I was looking at output and it wasn't, I was like, what music? But I didn't realize my mic was down here.
Melissa?
Thanks.
Here we go again.
Yeah.
Hello.
Welcome to the interview. How are you, Jennifer?
Hi.
Welcome onboard.
Thank you.
This is our chairman, Peter Cross.
Hi, Jennifer.
Hi. Good to meet you. Thank you. So is there any particular place that I should sit or?
Judy sits at the far end, and she has the walkers. Yeah, Melissa, any designed seats?
No. Can you hear us?
Esther, yeah, Esther.
So she doesn't sit here, does she?
No, no, no.
Nope. You're perfect. All right, well, Doug's coming on, so we'll ask him.
Well, Doug and Frank both can make the meeting.
Hi, Brian. This is Jennifer Drew, our new member.
Hi.
A pleasure to meet you.
Thank you.
James, yes?
James, maybe. He was gonna try.
John, no.
Judy, John, no.
Judy, no?
Judy, yes.
Judy, yes.
Yeah, and here's a 2023.
To open up the documents.
You always think, are you gonna join the meeting?
No.
Okay.
No.
Hi.
Happy New Year, man.
Have a seat behind. Hi, guys. Can anybody hear me?
I can hear you, Melissa.
Thanks, John. I forgot for audio testing. At 6:00, we have everybody here. Thank you so much.
Are there any here?
Yeah, I don't know.
That's in the front. Is this you there? All right. You can come to my office today. Jennifer.
Are you there?
Oh, I forgot. You two don't meet each other. Jennifer and Grayden.
Brian, how are you? Grayden. Grayden, nice to meet you, Grayden.
Grayden, yes.
How are you?
Good to meet you.
This is our chairman, Peter Cross. And do you? Hi, Judy. So this is Judy, and then next to you is Jennifer Drew, and then Grayden members, and you go Brian.
I recognize you without with your mask on, but then you won't recognize me because I'm about to cry.
Come on, James will see you.
Hi.
John is not. You're perfect. Brian, I could give you one. He can have it. They saw me in my office. And push him in. I was trying to keep him.
It's like the service you see.
Crazy, right?
Or no?
Yeah. You have to make sure you mute yourself.
Did I what?
To make sure you mute yourself as soon as you can enter. So it's June 10, 69.
Here, everyone. According to the town clock, it is 6 o'clock. So I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Woodstock Planning Board for January 5th, 2023. And it's held in the Cornwall Building via Zoom. It's a hybrid regular meeting. Are there any updates to the agenda?
We had an email from Jennifer regarding WEC, and as you guys might have saw, I did send a response, so just that's it.
All right. Well, the first thing is to take care of some household business here. And the first thing is to welcome the new members to the board. We have Jennifer Drew and we have Grayden York. Welcome aboard, guys.
Thank you.
Welcome. And the next bit of business we have to do is to elect our vice chair. I would like to nominate Judith Kermit to be the vice chair, second. All in favor?
All right.
Grayden and Jennifer, you guys. So.
Alex Stein.
Okay.
I've seen.
Okay.
Hope I can get it on here. I just got a failed link thingy doing. 552077.
Judy, we're happy to have you on as vice chair. And thank you. If Stuart and Connor get bored and go to YouTube, thank you for your time, and I sent you guys nice letters and. Okay.
Okay, so minutes. We have the minutes from December 1st. We'll accept the minutes as is. Everybody agrees?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
Okay, on the communications and announcements. We have a memorandum from Highway Department regarding the Woody Mack Timber Harvest, which we will get to at the end of the meeting. We have an email from Bill requesting an extension to the DeSwan Aaron's case, which we will get to at the end. We have an email and attachments from Corbett and the officer regarding the Woodsy Mack Timber Harvest, which we again will do at the end of the meeting. We have an email from Campanza, a familiar story, which is regarding STRs and other towns. We have the final decision and recommendations for case 2201 for Twin Gables. That's from the CCD we received December 14. And we have a letter from Bone Steel, the Highway Superintendent, regarding the Calamar Lane application. We have our talk of towns topic issue received January 3rd. We have an email from the WEC regarding the Fam Acres subdivision. And we have the passing of the local law number 062022, which is the Wellhead Town Water Aquifer Supply. And we have a legal, we have a notice, not a legal, we have a notice and determination from Alex regarding fam. We will get to that much later. So on the new business, we have before us two sketch plan reviews. Both of them are seconds. And again, we have an extension. So first sketch plan review is for Fam Acres LLC, Planning Board Case 21-1226. And the Woodstock Wetlands and Water Course Permit Application Number 21-045. This meeting is for legal counsel for applicant and planning board to wrap up the meeting of the subdivision and lot line revision, including wetlands and water course permit applications for 147 acre acre lot subdivided into 12 lots in the R3 zoning district. And this is located in 1883 Glasgow Turnpike. And the reps are Melissa Meyer, John Mansick, Barry Medenbacher, Ben Bachman Eggers, Alec Glad of Cuddy and Federer, and Red Bull of Shokin Architecture, and Fred Meyer of McBrien Associates. So before I ask the applicants to present to the board what they have, I would just like to bring our new members a little up to speed on this case. This is the largest subdivision, major subdivision that the planning board has had in many, many years. We have been working on this for over a year. We've included the Woodstock Environmental Commission to do site visits. We've been out here almost a year ago doing site visits, looking at the proposed road, proposed lots. We have gone over everything from traffic to roads. And everything has pretty much been gone through and approved up to the point where we're looking at the conservation easement areas. And what's going on, if you guys look at the map, you'll see there's a lot of wetlands.
Also up there.
And those are town.
You will be able to see it.
And those town wetlands have 100-foot buffer, and there's streams which have their own buffer. Those areas are under town. In other words, the town has the, the mark, the zoning enforcement officer has the right to make sure that everything on those areas meets town specs. The applicant is not asked to include a lot more area in a conservation easement to protect a great portion of the property, and so I'll explain to you, most of it is an easement. And our last question was, we wanted to make sure.
Sorry, Peter, it's not an easement.
Right.
It's a conservation area, but an easement is a different thing, with a different legal status.
Okay, area.
Correct. The definition of how it will be managed is what we are, part of what we're discussing.
Exactly. So that being said, I just wanted the new members to know that we have been on this quite a while, and we're trying to just get some final things nailed down about the easements or any other questions, board member. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to the applicant. I guess Barry is going to make the presentation to the board.
Barry, if you need it, I do have the aerial flyovers with all the weapons.
You have the whole set in there. Yeah.
I've got your set, but it also kind of.
I don't know how much you want to go over. I mean, it's made. This shows the overall development. This, most of it is actually the land over here. Maybe just to there's a large tract of land over here, 27 acres. But no build conservation area is actually being conveyed to a neighbor who also has other lands that he's going to preserve. All the dark green areas on the property are the conservation area. Will there be no disturbance? Most part have no disturbance at all within 100 feet of the wetlands. There is a little bit with the entrance road where it comes in. But this entrance road was selected by the County Highway Department. We also have, you know, an existing dwelling out on the highway here. So we had a setback from that, and it really goes through an area that is really a stone quarry. The surplus stuff, they just piles of stone and that that it comes through. This is, this property had been heavily mined many years ago, but it's been overgrown. As far as it's relatively new growth, but it's predominantly wooded with the exception of the front open field here. And we kept disturbance down quite a bit. We have a proposed road. It'll be a private road that'll be maintained privately with two little spur miner roads. That'll be the access for all the lots.
Question, Barry?
Excuse me?
Question, when you said mine, it was bluestone mining?
Yeah, it was bluestone mining. And you can see there's remnants of the old mining, some quarry holes around. Most of that is in conservation area, not all, but most of it. In fact, it was the subject of valuation, the archaeologist with the shipboat, which we do have a sign off from the state.
I was only raising it because sometimes people think mining means toxic, and this is not.
Oh, yeah, no, it was all bluestone. It probably, it probably hold out of here by mules, you know, like. You know, you know, a long time ago, a long, long time. And there's remnants of that work, stones they didn't use or in piles. You can see those piles, the piles are overgrown, trees coming out of them and stuff. So that's a lot of the landscape. It's a, you could see evidence of that, which means the whole entire site had been cleared at one time, you know, probably 100 years ago. So we talked about the access a little bit. The Highway Department approved that location. We've also been working with the Health Department. They're about to approve each one of the lot septic systems. In the month. Engineering we have left, which is predominantly done, is the final Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, which is required to be filed with the DEC before we start construction. It's also known as the SWIP, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. So that is, we've, we have it, it's almost completed with, you know, design and calculations. We've had to modify a little bit of that with the, the end of lots, you know, designing the septic systems and modifying those affects all the drainage on the site, so it had to be done coordinated. So that's, that's just about ready. So, you know, we've prepared a detailed, long-form environmental assessment form. We had a biological report, you know, assessment of the habitat on site. And I think, I think the next step is, is to review the environmental review and hopefully move towards a negative declaration. And our attorney prepared a draft to just help you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah. So we still need a public hearing.
Very, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
Could you remind me where the existing home is?
And then barn.
And then the barn, and then that lot, that parcel is divided into 4.3 acres.
Yes.
Is the open space, is there more open space that goes into lot two?
Yeah, there's dark green area. So lot one, which has the existing house, is this line right here, pretty rectangular. And the back corner of it has that 100-foot area to the wetlands. And it actually goes, it's even a little more than that. We just, just for calculation purposes, we just ran a straight line all the way out to the properties. So the little corner of that lot will be subject to the conservation area. And then, and you can see, you can see basically the light green areas are the buildable portions of the parcel that are not restricted.
I've got the aerial photograph, but I don't have the outlines of the lots. But you can see that area that is kind of beige-y pink. That's the open area. And the blue is the buffer around the wetland.
Right.
So I imagine your lot line is probably around here somewhere.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's probably about right.
The red is just a contour line.
Where did this map come from?
This is the map that I maintain. It combines Hudsonia materials and the, the county parcel map.
Right.
Therefore, the outlines of properties are not precise.
Right.
We do the best we can. Roads come from the milepost stuff on the state website.
I was gonna say, even the wetlands, when we actually surveyed them in the.
Oh, yeah. I always say to people, property outlines and wetland outlines are approximate online. And you have to, you have to be on the ground with a certified person to be sure. I'm sure your map is more accurate than this, but I want people to kind of see
Get visual.
The visual of the woods and the rest of it. I will go back to your plot.
Any other questions?
Mean by the neighbor getting the.
He's gonna purchase this parcel, but purchased it with the restriction of no building, of disturbance, basically.
Does he already have something that's of the property?
Okay, so FYI, who is this is John McCormick, which we've met, who is Woodsy Mack.
Okay.
And he plans on doing similar, not touching it, not building. You know, like what he does with the 40A.
Say that again. Who's gonna purchase it?
Woodsy Mack?
That's what I thought you said.
Get the guy on the same line.
He owns this parcel right here. Adjacent to it, so they. And this parcel actually goes on, you know, on the map, and it'll all fit on this sheet.
It was at 20 something.
27.2 acres.
It'll be subject to the same legal agreement as all the other lots. So that, yeah, nothing can basically happen. It's just gonna sit there unused into perpetuity.
The forest maintains underneath the.
Yeah, and I will point out too that, you know, we gave up some other buildable areas, like all over here. Particularly over here, there's a large area that's not really restricted by wetlands. There's a little bit of steep slopes, but you know, this could have been buildable area, but we would have had issues accessing it by crossing the wetlands. Or somehow, I mean, Plauchman Lane is right here, it's close to that, but we don't have a right of way. I mean, they could have attempted to purchase right of way to get in there. But we decided to put it, make it part of one of the lots and put it in the conservation area. So I think the owner of this has been very generous, I would say, with, you know, saying, hey, we're just gonna take lands and.
I think it's really been an admirable job of doing what you need to do for the point of view of the owner's interests and also protecting.
We have an applicant who's very conscious of that.
Yeah.
So as the admin, the only thing that at this point that I've heard and why I kind of called Alec and John, who's online somewhere, is the only question that I've really been asked is, town of Woodstock has. So this is, this is my only thing that I've really.
Just a question, John, is jurisdiction over the Woodstock wetlands versus the overall conservation area? That's my question.
Can you just elaborate on that a little bit for me, Peter, please?
Well, they, the applicant has clearly delineated, marked out the wetlands and their buffers, which are of course under Woodstock jurisdiction. And they've also added a huge area of their own to a conservation area, which whatever jurisdiction they wish that to be under, but I just want to make sure that Woodstock still has jurisdiction over.
I just, I lost you. If you can hear me, I just lost your sound for a bit. You can hear me, Peter. I can't hear you at the moment.
I can't hear anything either.
They've disappeared. I think they have to reconnect.
Yeah, that sounds right.
I hope they know that.
This is life in the modern world, right?
I see you're back, but you're on mute.
No, I'm not. High five. All right, Peter, John, and Judy.
Okay, so Peter, you might have to repeat the, your question if my answer doesn't satisfy you. But yes, Woodstock continues to maintain jurisdiction over the wetlands that qualify as such under Woodstock Wetlands Law.
I think the issue was that somebody said we don't have a law because it isn't called that. But we do have a law. It's just not called the Wetlands Law, right? I think it's elsewhere in the law.
I think John entertained exactly what the concern was.
Right, that's.
It's semantics.
We just want to make sure.
Yeah. So John, I know you went back and forth with Alec, and that was really, please speak up if not, but the only concern that I've heard from my planning board. John?
Yes, I'm here.
So, you know, I mean, I know the road maintenance agreement will come.
Yeah.
I know the county, the septic approvals is coming. That's all we'll work at all in two.
My understanding of the issue is what will be the nature of the management of the conservation areas?
Right.
Talk a little bit about that.
Sure.
Yes.
Just to get back to the chairman's point, I think one of the benefits of what we're doing by incorporating our proposed conservation declaration on the town's wetlands and the areas not subject to the town's wetlands is that it provides the same protection for both lands. And say, if in the future, for some reason, the wetland regulations change, they become less restrictive, they're still protected as they are today because the private agreement will apply, and those wetlands will still be subject to those enforcement regulations. And instead of reinventing the wheel, basically what we did is we just took the existing town of Woodstock wetland regulations, turned it into a declaration of restrictions, which will be filed in the county clerk's office and applied to the conservation areas. So there's a couple enforcement mechanisms that make sure that what is contained in the declaration will be followed and will be carried out. The first is it will be recorded in the deed for every single lot, and it will appear in the chain of title into perpetuity. So every single lot forever will be subject to the conservation restrictions. Also, we need to form an HOA to maintain the private road. But what we're also doing is we're gonna give the HOA enforcement oversight over the conservation areas. So you also have the declaration and the deeds, and now you have what is basically a third. the conservation areas. So you also have the declaration and the deeds, and now you have what is basically a third party monitoring and maintaining the conservation areas. And one thing that we've proposed, which was from that letter from our HOA attorney, is doing an annual inspection by the HOA and also providing an annual report to the town certifying that they did the annual, annual inspection and any and all um conservation restrictions are being adhered to. Which that gives then the town a, a ready mechanism that if they're not being complied with, the code enforcement officer, building inspector can issue a zoning violation, fines, stop work orders, and things of that nature to really keep an eye on this and make sure that what we're saying is gonna happen does happen.
Question.
Yes.
So all of the property attached to specific parcels that have a house on, except for the one that's being sold to the neighbor?
Yes.
Okay, but the HOA can say to a homeowner, you're violating the rules and report it to the code enforcement.
Yep, and also the HOA will have authority itself to issue its own fines, to issue injunctions, either to stop them from doing something or to make them fix what they've done.
And in addition, in addition to that, Judy, that the homeowners themselves uh will have a right of enforcement under the deed restriction as well. So when homeowner uh, you know, if they observe something and the HOA is not doing anything, it'd be possible for them to bring their own action to enforce the deed restrictions. Alec, can I ask you a question? Uh, was, was any consideration given to giving the town of Woodstock a, a right of enforcement written into the uh deed restriction?
Yeah, I think that's kind of basically what we're saying with that um annual reporting provision for the HOA. And why we're doing it like that is so the town has a singular entity to go to. If there is an issue site-wide, as opposed to having to track down and figure out among the twelve different lots, who they have to go after, so we just kind of thought that would be an easy way to make the town's enforcement obligation easier.
Yeah, I guess what I was, had in mind was something that would be more direct than that, which was writing into the deed restrictions that the town of Woodstock would have a permissive right to enforce the deed restrictions. Um, and that would allow them to go forward and take the initiative on their own under the deed restriction. I do understand that, you know, because you're duplicating uh what's in the um and at the moment in Woodstock's uh wetlands regulations, that the town has the option of proceeding in that way. But I think um, the reason I'm thinking about this is uh connected to a point that you made a little bit earlier, which was a good one, which was that uh the deed restriction is um going to sort of freeze the preservation of these uh wetlands areas into place. And in the future, if Woodstock's uh um wetlands restriction, uh wetlands regulations became uh more permissive, the deed restriction would still protect everything that's shown in the protected area on these maps. And in that instance, um, if, if the wetlands uh regulations became less restrictive, then the town of Woodstock's ability to enforce would contract uh in that instance um, you know, in, in, in proportion to the contraction of the scope of the regulations on this property. But if they had a right of uh enforcement under the declaration, then they would be, the town would still always be able to enforce the area that's covered by the declaration. So that's, sorry about being so windy, but that's sort of what I'm thinking about.
Yeah, yeah, um, we have no issue with that because the approval's subject to the conservation restrictions that we're placing on it anyway, so it's just affirming that again and running, so that's, that's.
Okay, great. I mean, if we could just add, you know, one or two lines to the declaration to include that, that would be terrific. And members of the planning board, that's just another, there are plenty of protections in this deed restriction, but that's just yet one more little layer uh of protection that would be built in to uh making sure that these deed restrictions get observed uh over the long term, long after all of us are gone.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John. All right, for uh, for the members' benefit, and just to refresh everybody else, one of the other issues we dealt with on this project was that um some of the lots are quite large, ten acres, full of acres. And the building area is in front and all the weapons are in the back. So the issue that we were trying to deal with is five, ten years from now, how do we keep those buildings from sprawling out into the weapons? And the idea was uh that Barry brought up, that they will create a, a building envelope, an area which only you can build in and develop. And uh therefore can't spread into the rest of the protected areas.
What does U-shaped structure mean?
Right.
What, what does this mean? U-shaped structure?
One is building in the other.
Are you talking about the yellow blocks?
No, no, the, the words here, U-shaped structure. It sounds like you're defining what the house footprint would be.
Oh, you know, I, I don't know. That's something that uh, that's probably the ghost thing that shouldn't be on the map. I think that's still with the CAD.
The program.
Funny how you notice. I didn't even see.
So what Barry's suggesting is to actually put markers, like you would, like you would a property market.
Oh, yeah.
It does say U-shaped, U-shaped structure. You wanna know something? I read this off quick today. I'm not sure where that came from.
Not for me.
Part of the map.
I.
I'm not sure where that came from. You know? I'll tell you, every time something comes, every time something's out of the flower, you gotta put this, like.
I'm like, I don't, I looked at this earlier.
Yeah, I'll just mention to the new members, one of the reasons is because when we create a lot, any lot in any subdivision, we don't, the only thing we have to have is board of health approval, that there's actually been a place approved separately. But we don't actually pick where the building goes. So in a normal lot, somebody can build wherever they want, as long as they can get septic in. So the difference is, in this case, we're actually trying to restrict where you can go in, in the building envelope.
So air makers team, my new board. It's been a long, we're a year. And I think if the planning board are good, we are at that point where I will schedule the next meeting. We will do the wetlands and water force permit findings, which is what the planning board does. And we will do the C grow. They have deck, whatever deck, we'll go through all that, come up with that. And then we'll schedule a public hearing. Planning board? Yep. You guys have been amazing to work with. You really took the code, and I mean, I saw it every time you brought me something new, or you emailed me a question, or somebody from one of your staffs of your offices, hey, let's look at this before we submit it. Um, you really, you took what the town of Woodstock, conservation, wetlands, what you wanna do, and you put it into a plan, and I can't commend you enough.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, excellent job.
Took us a year or two.
All right, only a year. Rob, go talk, what, seven?
Any other members have questions for the applicant?
Somebody asked on chat, is this related to KOA Terramore? And I'm, I'm answering, nothing to do with Terramore. It's kind of in the same end of town. That's about the only connection.
I will email you guys next weekend. We'll schedule those dates um, so we know when it's happening.
Okay, so the next week, we'll review in detail the, like, the environmental review for both the wetlands and the subdivision itself. And then go to public hearing after that.
Yep.
And just to.
I think there's, that's really where we're at, where we, we really have advisory opinion from the county.
We do?
Right.
So they'll just get my resolution when we're all done?
Yeah.
Yeah, we are. Let's, we're, we're there.
Good.
And just to address the uh, the letter from the WEC, that had some questions about the overall environmental protection. And I just wanna say that WEC, we and A2 have done everything as protected as we possibly can and keep within, you know, the land. So, um, and we'll get more into it in the wetlands.
I, I have to agree with that. The, the question about whether the homeowners association is gonna be part of the enforcement, what you've said this evening, just as far as I'm concerned, answers the question.
Okay. Glad to hear.
Other questions?
Yes, Ben.
All right. I don't like feeling what that is. It's a U-shaped structure.
All these new and.
All right, very, thank you.
It is on the one that we got in the mail.
It might have been an email version or something.
Yeah. Yeah, who knows? Very nice to see you.
My goodness, very long time.
Thank you all.
All right, very thanks.
You're sharp, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
You know, just for, for people's information, this is the kind of thing that the proposed new either encourage or require. So it's like a nice model of how this could be done.
Sure is.
Town board passes the zoning, this will be required, not just, I mean, not quite as generous as this possibly.
Assume.
But, but the other point that Judy brought up is their presentation is what we wanna see. There's some applications for subdivisions that don't show any of that.
Yeah.
They just draw a circle. Oh, there might be some wetlands over here or something. No. Their, their, uh, application is very good. Okay, so our next uh sketch plan review. Again, this is the second one. Uh, this is Michael Arnstein, and this is special uh number twenty-two dash zero three eight five, S U P number twenty-two zero six six seven. This is the second sketch plan review for a site plan review and special use permit application to construct and operate a seven-unit motel in five buildings in the Hamlet Commercial Zoning District located at one, three, and five Kalamar Lane in Woodstock. And Brad Will is the applicant, uh, representing the applicant. So Brad, if you would tell the board and the new members.
Well. Brad, if you can tell me what document you would like people to be able to see.
Oh, I have a bunch of documents. Yeah, um, well, I didn't bring the large drawings because they're begging.
I can throw it up. I just need to know which, I've like, got like eight different documents.
Oh, you can put the site plan up, I guess?
It's not called that. Site planner review referral and application doesn't have that.
Wow.
And that's why, because I don't know which of these various things. I can put them all in one folder, but that's still, let's see, anything shows up.
Um, you can pass these around. So I did bring a package for us to look at.
Thank you.
Um.
Is that it? Yeah, okay, then I can, I can bring it up.
Thank you, everybody. Um, thank you, Melissa, for scheduling for this first meeting of the year. Welcome to the new members.
Thank you.
Um, so we came here, I think in August, it was uh, just in the initial time, we, we stopped in and presented. Um, and we've had some time to just, you know, do our due diligence, so to speak. Um, we think we are, we have a, a really wonderful proposal and application for the board to look at and consider. Um, I put together this package as sort of an informational, and I, I sent it to Melissa about mid-December. Uh, not all of it, but part of it, the um part that is called section, like the second section in here called uh the zoning code compliance. I believe John Lyons has had that as well. So uh, there's been some time to look at that. Um, I think the purpose of this, this meeting is to just reintroduce it um to uh explain and describe how what's being proposed is uh very consistent with the, the town of Woodstock zoning. Um, that we think there's a lot of uh good attributes and assets to the, what we're proposing. Um, so we're not looking for any, any uh zoning board variances. Uh, we are, as far as we could tell. And uh, you know, I'd like, I'd be interested to hear what John Lyons says as well. Uh, are in complete compliance with uh, with what the uh um, Hamlet Commercial District describes. Um, I took the opportunity to just look at what, what constitutes the, this very kind of specific and, and narrow uh Hamlet Commercial District. That's, that's really confined to uh the center of town. Um, and this, this, this map on the cover doesn't show it all, all of it. It just takes it sort of up to uh right near the bend at, at the Village Green. So it's really just like the, the, what's called the westerly ed, edge or uh extension of, of the Hamlet Commercial. So our site is uh comprised of three parcels. Uh, we would ultimately um combine them, and that's a uh, a pretty straightforward procedure with the county. Um, so for our purposes, we're presenting it as if it's one uh contiguous one point five acre parcel. Uh, so what's interesting, I think, on this uh map is uh just the, the diversity of uses uh uh, which is really in the spirit of, of what the Hamlet Commercial uh language in the, in the zoning um, uh encourages. Uh, for instance, we have a lot of shops. Uh, we have a lot of commercial use, uh mixed, uh mixed uses with a mixture of, of, of commercial and residential. We have stray residential, we have uh just in cultural. So it's, it's a real pastiche of uses along this spine of Woodstock, kind of like the Main Street, Tinker Street is Main Street for Woodstock. Uh, the, the zoning codes describes sixty-six different types of uh use of, of, of uses uh that are allowed in, in the Hamlet Commercial. This is far more than any other um district allows. Uh, so it's, it's encouraged and it's meant to be uh a dense and diverse district. And uh, you know, it's in a walkable section of town. Um, as some on this board were involved with Woodstock Way uh back in twenty sixteen and on. Uh, we propose and, and, and we're successful in having Woodstock Way reviewed and approved. And that's a twenty-three unit project if on two and a half acres, less than two and a half acres. And that's in a Hamlet Residential District. Um, I did consult with the, the, I was curious, just to sash, I'm, sash on my own curiosity, I put, I connected with the uh uh Woodstock uh Police Department and said, have there been any, any uh um complaints, noise complaints or such, because they are in a residential district and surrounded on, not just in it, but surrounded on, on three out of four sides by residential uses. And uh, there have been none. So I think it's a, it's, 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 it's a fair comparison and precedent to what we're proposing. Um, which is uh less than a third of the number of units. Um, these uh buildings themselves are the sizes of modest, small to modest-sized houses, each one. Um, and uh and are right off of, they're just right off of Tinker Street. Uh, it's a walkable uh district. So I'm just gonna walk really quickly through this, and, and you can have time to look at it, because we're just reintroducing here and you know, the expectations here are just to understand what we're proposing. And um, as Melissa has all the drawings for it, she can, you can, you can uh walk into her office and look at it anytime. So this is just a, you know, a more of a handy, you know, uh pocket size or briefcase size synopsis. So the first three pages are what I was just describing as, as uh what comprises the spine of uh the Hamlet Commercial District. The next section is uh, and I'm not gonna spend time on this, I just wanted to like note some of the highlights. Um, I really took some time to go through the, the, the current uh Woodstock zoning codes. And just to make sure that what we're doing is, what we're proposing is consistent with, with, with what the zoning described. And I think, you know, there, there may be one or two sections that I, I may have overlooked, but I, I think it's pretty thorough. And uh, you know, there, so there are some points here that I think are important to know, and one of which is self-descriptive. My um. responses to each of these sections is the, uh, the bold blue. So you can take a look at that, and, and, and I encourage you to come back with questions, of course. So that's the second section here. And it goes all the way through. Uh, now, now, some motels and hotels will have, uh, conference rooms and banquet halls and restaurant facilities, swimming pools. We're not doing any of that. This is just, this is just for, uh, you know, these are units where, um, uh, business people, uh, families, musicians, artists can come and stay for anywhere from a, a weekend to, uh, a whole season. You know, it's, it's really about people spending time getting to know Woodstock and enjoying it, much as the, uh, the owner has done with his family for decades. He's been coming to Woodstock and, uh, uh, he ironically, it, it had some difficulties finding places to stay. So, you know, there's, to, to our thinking, having a, a, a very, a very small-sized hotel, which the total, uh, square footage of is, is less than a, a, a large house, if you really, um, wanted to go there, that it's a really appropriate use for, for this property. Uh, the history of this property is, is a bit, uh, you know, tortured and painful. There was a, a very bad fire there in twenty eighteen. Uh, there are some photos towards the end of this after the site plan and some of the renderings that we have that show, um, the vast and copious, uh, open spaces that would be for gardens and, uh, and fruit trees and, and flowering trees and vegetables and you name it. It's, it's about openness here. So we're, we've pulled the, the buildings to the edges and, and opened it up and, and to have access to the, uh, the suspension footprints as well. So if you looked, if you just jumped to the end, you know, what Michael Aronstein encountered when he got here, when he got to this property, uh, was just devastation. There were buildings that were, even before the fires, uh, were, were very substandard. There were five families living there, so that the, the number of, uh, of occupants there was really not that different from what we're proposing with the seven units. So the buildings were, three of the buildings were just destroyed. They were so badly damaged that they weren't worth saving. And the, the fourth building was a, uh, an old cabin that literally had, um, steel lally columns posting down into the tannery room. So we've done, we were here earlier and we, we, uh, had the, the initial cottage design which was pulled back by about twenty-five feet or so, correctly from Ron Peters, from the, uh, from the, from the edge of the street. So, but anyway, to jump back to the, to the conditions, so, you know, there, there was a lot of vision that was involved in, in, uh, kind of a leap of faith in a way, buying a property that would, that had been on the market for a couple of years and saying, hey, I'm going to do, I have something in mind for this, and, uh, and I'm going to clean it up. And, and it, it, it was a, a, a pretty significant investment just to get all of these, uh, you know, dangerous, um, structures raised and, uh, and the material, um, moved out, which of course he did with a, with a demolition permit to, uh, to, uh, the department. So the very last page shows, well, not, excuse me, not the very last page, but the, it shows how it's been cleaned up. This is, this is over a year, almost two years ago, that it's been just a, an empty, a kind of a, a blank canvas waiting for something to happen. Uh, something should happen here. Uh, we hope it's our project because we, we really believe in it and think it's going to be a fantastic addition to Woodstock, uh, and answer a lot of needs and, and really kind of address, uh, you know, the, 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 the kind of divisive and challenging question of short-term rentals that's occurring in the less dense parts of the town where it's, 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 it doesn't, it doesn't work as well. So we think that a motel and a hotel, as with Woodstock Way, as with Twin Gables, as with, um, other, other, you know, Woodstock Lodge, that these are places where, that are legitimate and that where people can go and stay and enjoy Woodstock. And then I'll just take you to the last part, uh, which was, uh, a couple of letters that have been issued by the, uh, Kevin Peters from the Fire Department and Scott Bonestall from, uh, the Highway Department. We lit, we did look at the access from Tinker Street. And by the way, I also met with, uh, representative from the New York State D O T because two-twelve is a, a state highway. Although there's a little gray area about who's really responsible for that, so it's partly the, the town claiming some jurisdiction there, but, you know, it's, why not talk to the state too? So we had a good conversation and, uh, uh, all three were, you know, to, you know, were assessing it. Um, we, we, we took out our measuring tapes and started from the beginning and measured the cross-section all the way in. Both Scott and Kevin were satisfied with the width, the, the clear width. Whatever happens there, and, and that's, that means, you know, where Kevin was concerned, he's, he's confident. Uh, you know, sadly, he had to pull in his apparatus there for that devastating fire in twenty eighteen, but by the time they got there, it was, it was just a total loss. They couldn't do much, but he, he had no problem getting in. And, uh, in terms of the turnaround, uh, we, we designed that carefully to make sure that, you know, uh, say, uh, an emergency vehicle can get in and out easily. We did talk in this letter, uh, outline, just, and you can read it if you haven't seen it already, uh, the, the possibility of putting in a, a, a fire hydrant and, um, and further, uh, sprinkling the, at least the, the three-unit, um, townhouse-style building. Uh, it's really not required by code, but if that's something that Butch wanted to see, uh, we're completely open to that. So those were his comments. Otherwise, you know, he and Scott were both, um, having, were pretty satisfied with the conditions. The only thing that's, that was a little challenging, which is quite easy to remediate, are the, are the growth of, of the brush that is right by the entrance. And it's not, right now, it's not ideal to go in and out of that, especially out, because it's very dense. I don't know if it's for Cynthia, but it's some kind of bush that's, that should be, you know, taken down somewhere, because it's, it's, it's not a, it's not safe now. So it's, it's the sort of thing that should be dealt with at some point. So the line of sight, it's, it's a thirty mile an hour zone, I believe, um, in town. And, you know, with, with, with seven units, uh, you know, some of which, um, guests would, would come up by bus from the city, and they, they, that's what they do at Woodstock Way now. Um, and so it might not be even fully, you know, automobile-centric, uh, because it's, people come to town, they, they come and they want to stay, and they want to walk around or, but they want to bicycle. So we see that as, as sort of a, a model here, and that it wouldn't be, um, you know, a, a bevy of cars coming and going, and it's really, it's seven units, it's not a ton. And it's worked out pretty well. Again, I'm going to use Woodstock Way as a, as an example, that, that, uh, they've been a good neighbor so far. It's, uh, it's worked out. It, it is, it was, uh, recognized by the AIA as a, received a design honor award, so we did something right there. And, uh, and this is a very different kind of project, architecturally and stylistically, but it's, um, there's more whimsy here. There's, um, you know, the stone houses, which are meant to be, uh, sort of, uh, informed by the Dutch, Dutch-style architecture. There's the Little House on the Prairie, which is the Little House by the Stream, which is just kind of a, you know, a fun aspect. Uh, there's a, there's a real American craftsman cottage style, and there's a more modern townhouse-style building. Uh, the, the parking that we have is, is adequate, but that, again, is addressed in the compliance, um, summary. And that's, that's kind of what I have for now, and I, we can, we can have a question and answer it now, or, or we can just do whatever you, you want to do, but that's.
I have two questions.
Yeah.
Um, if I put up the twenty-twenty-one flyover image, give me just a second, I see two questions. That's the old little cottage that you're tearing down.
It's already gone.
Yeah, it's already gone. Here's the stream. This, I guess, is going, right? Or it's gone?
All the buildings are gone.
It's completely vacant.
The only concern that I have is what you're calling the Little House on the Prairie seems to be within the ninety-foot buffer of the stream.
It's, it's in, it's below the base flood elevation like the cottage, but that's, that was in the drawings that were submitted originally.
You know, the cottage we got because we moved it back. It was, it was definitely in violation of that then it moved back. But the other one is a new building, and as far as I can tell, it's within the, I mean, even your measurements on the drawing, that's a ninety-foot buffer by town law.
It would be built to the same standards in terms of having mitigation where it's, the, the, the ground floor is raised up and, uh, there are, are flood.
So I guess we, as a board, have to decide whether that's an acceptable mitigation or not.
Yeah.
But it needed to be raised.
Question, or is that?
No, that was my question.
Thank you.
And again, just for the new members, I'll, I'll mention that, uh, before a project like this gets, um, sent to the planning board, it goes through the zoning enforcement officer to make sure that it complies with, with everything. He wouldn't send us something that doesn't. So this complies, as Brad said, the list of all the, uh, conditions within the zone, it does comply with that. And again, when, the main thing we will be looking at is lighting and make sure that the dark sky compliant lights, parking is correct, uh, the Highway Department has approved access. Things have been done. So if anybody has questions for Brad, please ask them.
And, and anybody here, and also, um, if John Lyons has any comments too, I wouldn't mind, uh, hearing what he has to say, if he has anything to offer.
Uh, I, I don't have any immediate comments. I thank you for the compliance analysis. It was, uh, well done, in our opinion. Uh, the only note that we would make right now is just that, uh, in the event that this project is approved, uh, the merger of the lots would have to be a condition of approval, just so that the setbacks and all that would apply to, uh, this property as, as it's conceived as a single lot. But those are our only comments at the present time.
Absolutely. Yeah, we're in agreement.
Just out of curiosity, um, since you have a lot of, let's say, cultivated green space here, where are you going to draw your water from?
Glad you asked. There is a, a, a page in here called addenda, and that has, uh, you know, the, the, the foundation of how, of what we're going to propose for, you know, a planting schedule, as we have to do with Woodstock Way as well. And, uh, so that's, that gives you a, a, a brief synopsis, and as part of that would be rainwater catchment. So we would use, so we would not have to have an active irrigation system on the site. Um, we would, we would capture the rainwater, we would keep it in, in, uh, you know, cisterns that could be underground or above ground, uh, and those would be used for the.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and actually, I, I applaud that. I'm just curious, given the amount of space you have.
Well, I guess, you know, we're going to have, you know, exterior water spigots and, and hoses, so that's probably the best plan B I can think of.
And that's where you're going to draw them, you're going to draw.
That, yeah, that, of course, this is on town water and sewer. In fact, we have to take care on, on, on the placement, the location of these.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, buildings, because as it turns out, uh, the town water, excuse me, the sewer diverges from Tinker Street and runs under a whole bunch of properties, um, on the south side of, uh, of Tinker Street. And so we had to make sure we, we weren't building over the, or proposing anything that, that messed with those sewer lines.
I'm shocked.
You know, there was a, I, I'm, I, this was before my time. I'm sure there's a really good reason for doing that. Maybe Peter knows what the reason was.
John will have to answer that one.
Okay.
We'll get John next time.
Peter, I have a kind of pointed order question. We're getting questions on the chat, and technically, I suppose I should not be answering them. That ought to be stuff that happens at the public hearing.
Exactly.
Yep. Okay, I guess I'm going to say that.
Yeah. I, I wasn't even thinking about.
I, I did, I did briefly see something about plug problems, and that's a very interesting, uh, question because.
Yeah, I got it. Okay.
As it turns out.
Judy, can I add something to, to, I guess I, I do have another comment, which is, I just wanted to remind the board that, um, impacts to community character will be something that the board will look at, uh, at the time that it conducts its secret review of, of the project. You know, would be considering that with regard to the re-review of, uh, the secret review of any project that would be coming before it. So I just want to sort of, I know everybody knows that, but I want to reiterate that. So, uh, perhaps that, um, members of the public who are concerned about those impacts, uh, can be assured that they'll, they will be part of the, of the review. Um, the other thing is, uh, after having looked at the materials, um, Mr. Will, perhaps, uh, the applicant may want to consider, uh, submitting a full environmental assessment form, uh, with the application when it comes in versus the short form. Just because that provides a little bit of, uh, additional information, uh, for the board and for the public. Um, so that's something else, um, uh, I think, you know, the planning board should consider. I know this application hasn't been classified under secret yet, but if it were an unlisted action, um, the board would have the authority to request, uh, an F E A F if it decided that was appropriate. So I think that's something to think about.
Take that in your question. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
I have a question. Um, it's, it seems like you have very limited parking, actually. It seems like, you know, it's just parking that is just probably legally the amount for the occupants of the motel. How many spaces are there?
If you look, okay, that's, I'm going to refer you to the zoning code compliance on the page two of that. Arcing, I, I did take a look at that.
I'll tell you what my question is. I'm sure you probably did do math right on the site, but my question is, you have this large center, very complex garden area, which looks beautiful. But it also makes me think, oh, is this going to be like an event type of space where you're going to have a wedding? You're going to have a, like that, which, which would then draw like thirty more cars.
No, no, there's, there's been no discussion whatsoever about events here. It's, it's not.
I'm not sure how that gets, you know, lead the league, like.
No, and that would be.
Negated, but.
That would be shut down pretty quickly anyway, so we're not even going there.
Okay. And then, um, my only other question was, the, the footbridges, the purpose of those are just purely that you own the land across the river, and so it's an access to go and enjoy this land?
Use the rest of the property. They, they were not inexpensive parcels, and, uh, and it is a nice natural, um, uh, feature. Um, the owner is, uh, travels to, um, you know, faraway places and, and became enamored of, uh, of, of what I would consider very dangerous footbridges that I would never cross personally. Um, but these are, these will be well-engineered, uh, and, and not that long, really.
And the properties that are butts on the other side of the river, those are private, private residential properties or those?
No, it's a common property. Yeah.
And then my only other thing was the, um, this, uh, community gathering space, fire pit seating area, um, which is close to a property line? Is that, you know, is that a residential space next to that?
Yes.
And so.
Well, it's, well, it's, it's Hamlet Commercial, but it's residential.
Okay. Was there be some way to ensure that you put proper fencing or privacy fencing or something that is, it's going to be like a gathering space? Like, if that's happening right next to your house, that might be a bit of a concern for a neighbor?
Um, yeah, I, I think that, that we should, we should look at that. Absolutely. Yeah.
Area.
Screen area. Yeah.
So I see what he just brought up was that you've got eight parking spots. Is that right?
No.
Thirteen.
No, we have five.
Three or ten.
I think there are.
I think there are.
Nine or ten in that little.
There are thirteen, yes. It's more than code. It actually has, it accommodates, uh, guests beyond what's required. The one per motel room is, means seven. Uh, then we have two for staff, um, and the rest are, and there's a handicap with a, with a, a loading, loading zone. And the, the rest is, is beyond what's required.
Okay, because obviously the concern would be if there were more people than one. That would more lane might, might not be too.
And, yeah, that's, that would be an enforceable thing. And the other thing about this is when, uh, you know, if we're, if we approve, that, that, that lane itself will be improved.
Right.
Uh, right now, it's, uh, if you slow down or take a look at it, at the, at the base of it where it joins Tinker Street. Uh, right now, it's uh, if you slow down or take a look at it, at the, at the base of it where it joins Tinkham Street, it's just a a huge mud puddle. So this would be an improvement for the people who are renters on the, on the houses on either side as well.
Okay.
I have a question. I have a question related to across the stream. Um, that, that access up to the commo is very steep. And I can easily imagine somebody saying, oh, let's go walk on the commo and kind of bushwhacking. So it may be something that you need to consult with the commo advisory committee about some kind of trail that is marked and safe.
Sure.
Uh, and does not encourage people to go up there, just wherever they happen to want to grab a tree and climb.
Oh, that makes a lot of sense.
Because obviously people who want to hike.
Oh, yeah.
That's gonna be access.
Sure, yeah. It's a continuous property and absolutely.
Where's the sort of general office for like when you where your staff would work?
Um, we haven't exactly established that. We're thinking that it would be the American Craftsman House, which is where the the owner would would be. Because this is in large part for, for his family as well. So they would, they would operate the motel.
The only other thing I can think of is um, auction, so limited on hours or something just for the neighbors, you know, construction.
Oh, sure, yeah. Yeah.
In the resolution, we put something.
Yeah, I actually have something related to that, Peter. Uh, and it circles back to the discussion a little bit earlier regarding events. Um, Mr. Will, if you could, you know, when the application is formalized, if uh, you mentioned that, you know, there's been no discussion of events, but if you could address events in the application, even if it's just to say there will be no events. And address uh, the same thing with regard to outdoor music. Just um, things that would be liable to uh, be issues of concern for uh, people living in the surrounding neighborhoods. It would be good to have specific information about those things uh, right up front with the application. Um, the other uh, item I have is a question. Do, will the foot bridges require approval from DEC?
Uh, it's, it's probably something that we'll have to run by the DEC. We're, we're in the final stages of doing the engineering design work. Um, so that would be the next step.
Okay. If you could keep the board uh, apprised of that, I guess the only thing in my mind, uh, I'm sure I I, we didn't see the designs for the bridges and I'm sure the designs are very attractive.
We, John, I'm just gonna stop you. We, we approved the wetlands and water course permit for those bridges prior. Um, the game plan on this project was to make sure that they could obtain a wetlands and water course permit for this property. And the first initial proposal was for the wetlands and kind of a residence and possible housing. Um, but then it morphed into this. So, John, they, they have an active wetland and water course for those bridges.
Okay.
And it worked with the building department.
Okay, I do, it, yeah, I guess the only thing that was on my mind about is whether DEC would be looking for changes in the design. That's something that, you know, we'd want to know about.
Sure.
But I would like to say something about the bridges and I'll be frank with you, Brad. If we had known this was going to be transient and not residential in the sense we normally understand it, I don't know if I would have voted in favor of those bridges, because the amount of use they're gonna get and the amount of use the the commo is gonna get with a hotel application as opposed to permanent housing for people, I think is considerably more. And I'd be very concerned about it. I don't know that we can do anything about it because we've approved it, but I feel like we approved it under a misunderstanding of the intent.
Uh, well, okay, I I think that with seven units and and people there to enjoy the.
Yeah, but it's a difference between people who live there and people who are coming into the weekend who want to hike.
Sure, yeah.
It's a real difference in intensity, I think.
I do agree with Judy on that. That kind of threw me to the vol bridge thing earlier and you know, when I think about being a neighbor for this property and the transient issue of people who just left on the weekend, it becomes like, oh, is there a party in the river tonight or, you know, are we just gonna trek up to the commo through like these fields that never really get trekked on before? And I don't know, it's, is there any way to try to, you know, say like, can you please try to like be?
I'm, I'm sure that there is some vehicle that we can, we can figure that out and put some language that that makes sense for, for everybody, really.
Just like no access to commo here or something like that.
Have the formally approved so that people.
Yeah, have hours like on, on, I mean, on uh, public trails, uh, so dawn to dusk sort of thing. And so it's, it's, it's the sort of thing that, you know, the uh, the owner who's gonna be there. Right between.
Liability wise, you might not want.
No. Yeah, it's, it's, it's enlightened self-interest in that regard. Yeah, and it makes perfect sense.
Yeah, I echo this. I mean, I, I think, I felt there was a bait and switch and uh, that's my language. And uh, that's, so now we're we're very cautious because one thing was presented and something else is now happening, so.
But Brad, you will check with the DEC on uh, does that?
Yeah.
Well, if I might make a suggestion, maybe the way to resolve the board's concerns with this is uh, maybe the water and uh, wetland water course permit should be amended. Um, to reflect the use of the property as it's proposed now. And you can talk about resolving the the concerns that have been raised as part of that amended permit. That's just a suggestion.
Like to see that happen. I don't know what our legal standing is, but our attorney is suggesting it, so it's obviously something you can do.
Well, we haven't drilled down on the legal part of it, but you know, if it was something that the applicant is willing to consider, you know, that's something we could work on together.
Um, I know I didn't send you that, that resolution either. I got busy here. Um, I can send you that case file for you to look over and then maybe we can just get some response from you for the planning board and then we can either move forward or or figure out how we want to handle that. Okay?
Yep, we can do that.
Perfect.
Or, you know, if the, if the applicant, you know, may need time to think about this, so I'm not meaning to put Mr. Will on the spot, but if the applicant should be uh, interested in, you know, going that route, then, you know, you'll save me a lot of time uh, reviewing the file and, you know, we can just proceed accordingly, so. But send those materials along to me, Melissa. I would appreciate it.
Of course.
One thing to possibly think about is one bridge and not having it right at the end of the path, because that looks like y'all come. The way it's designed now. You know, I I'm sure you understand, we don't want to deny the owner the right to use property that he purchased, but on the other hand, we need to protect it. We need to protect the commo.
Yeah, and there are other instances of bridge crossings, as you know, behind Christian Science, Science Center, near the uh, parking lot and base of um, of commo and 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 other crossings further out. And for that matter, there are streams everywhere, so there are lots of different kinds of crossings, but I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, just let's not make it an attractive nuisance.
No. No, and in terms of noise, I mean, and in terms of events, you know, there will be, there would be guests here that have friends over and and they may have family with, you know, I, I, anybody could, could stay there. Um, and so they might have some events on on a balcony or outside in the gardens. But but those are small events and and that's enjoying the nature and and Woodstock and the surroundings. So it's not like everybody's gonna be, you know, hungered down in their, in their place and, you know, this, you know, it's the, how you define events and and certainly we don't want noise like, you know, some other places. I know it's, noise has been a, a big question in 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 Woodstock and and, you know, with all music being part of Woodstock, it's a, it's an interesting question for that matter. But, you know, we don't, the, the, I don't think it's, this is a wild party kind of idea.
To be continued.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna stay seated here unless I don't need to be. You tell me.
Are we missing anything before we can go to a public hearing? Are we missing?
I think what we, we should, well, let's firm up the wetlands and water course. Why don't you have a conversation with Michael?
Sure.
We can talk next week or the week after.
Yep.
And and you and I will talk and we'll figure out where we go from here.
Okay.
Let's, let's get the applicant input on a few things that you got to present, which was really, I wanted you to have the first meeting.
Yep, thank you.
Um, everyone heard you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Um, this was a beautiful sketch plan review. This is a project. Um, I don't think we want to go to a public hearing until we have.
Everything's gotta be.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so we'll, we'll talk.
I want to thank you for the detail here. It's really, you know, this stuff with the setbacks.
And 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 feel free to reach out and continue the conversation.
There was confusion when we first came in with the handle residential and handle.
Yeah.
So, so that right off the gate, what we, it, it happens. And that, that started, you know, this, but we're, we're, we're good. We're moving forward.
Yes. We all have the best intentions.
Yes.
Uh, so do you want me to uh, sit, sit back there for the next one or?
Sure, in case I need you, you have time.
Yeah, I'll stick around.
I don't think I'm gonna.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. Thank you, Brad.
Thanks, Brad.
Okay. Next, um, issue is a request for an extension, just to briefly tell our new members what's going on. This is a um, then, a new house being in the scenic overlay. And the scenic overlay has really been under um, scrutiny lately. And this particular case brought up the scrutiny because there was some trimming of trees and it got seen from a distance and it started a whole bottom line, it held the whole thing up quite a while. So um, I'll read it to you and we'll take it from there. This is a uh, Mark and Harriet Lee Swan Arens, special use permit number twenty one dash zero six six one. This is a special use permit application for construction of a new house and other projects located in the R five and scenic overlay zoning business. At one three two Valley View Way in Woodstock. And Brad is the applicant. And so Brad, if you.
We're not even gonna let him. This is, this, we, they need an extension of the SUP. What happened was COVID. A lot of COVID. I hate to blame that really, but they came back and looked for builders. Price was a lot higher than what they budgeted. And um, it's just taken longer. I mean, that's really the gip. So we just, we just need to grant them another year extension would be good, right?
Yeah, we, we have made a, a lot of progress. We have selected a, a construction manager, so it's, we're moving forward.
Because they went through so much with us, they're extremely being diligent.
Mm-hmm.
And 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 abiding by, you know, they planted all those trees that Lori Raskin went out and advised and so, yeah, they're requesting a year extension of the SUP, which is really easy. I can write that up on Monday morning.
A second, I need two seconds.
Yes, there we go. Peter made a motion and Brian seconded.
Now, that was, that was the one where somebody was showing us photographs that probably.
It wasn't that property?
It wasn't that property.
Let's give Mark and Harriet and their family their house, okay?
Yeah.
Thanks, Brad.
Last, uh, least.
I can do this too, this part.
Site visit update. I went by rods today. Um, I think you saw it too.
The what?
It is a low, it's, it's a low spot. It's his problem to build it. It will be built by building codes. I'm not worried about that. It meets the subdivision regs. There's access and he's got board of health approval.
Which property is it?
It's off of uh,
John Joy.
John Joy Road, his property is.
Coroas, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It's not the most beautiful lot you've ever seen, but it it meets the standards, so.
He's, he will be back at the next meeting. Um, I will take a look at the drawings and we have to put on the houses and the access, but everything is pretty okay.
I saw them, I saw the ribbons for that. I did not see he marked the road access, but I know we have a curb cut of pools, so.
And it seems pretty easy. Yeah, 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 yeah.
You can't go very far from the road.
Exactly. So, yeah, so Judy, you're up next.
Um, Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the following draft resolutions as they were received. McDonough and Skulls SUP twenty two oh six seven one. Laser SUP twenty two oh six seven two. And V R E H I Twin Gables LLC SPR two two oh three one oh A. Um, and we have drafted all of those in the past week. We've seen them, so I move approval.
Second.
On the favor. Yeah, one more.
Yeah.
All we have to do with the Mac. I'm gonna find. Send me a draft thing of that.
Uh, no, probably not. Um, we can talk about it though. So we received quite a few documentations really based on what you guys had stressed as your concerns were on Woodsy Mac. I did a lot of labor work and I actually spoke to Association of Towns. I spoke to the head of forestry at DC. DC told me that so what was the number? Seventy eight percent, something crazy of timber harvests go unpermitted. This is the world we live in. This is a four eighty A. That land has been under that four eighty A for almost thirty years. These are people you want.
Which four do you mean?
It's a, it's a.
So it's a timber man, it's actually, it's actually a tree farm. It's a tree farm.
Yeah.
Is what it is.
Um, if he doesn't abide by what he signed up for, he is fined.
Well, the other issue is that this is a permitted
use.
Activity and it requires a special use permit and the planning board in doing so can put restrictions. We have put more restrictions on this timber harvest than any I've ever done before. Other restrictions were from neighbors who live on the road Eastern Lane, concerned about the logging trucks going back and forth. The issue is it's a public highway and it falls under all the regulations of any public highway. If somebody's gonna build a house there, there's gonna be cement. It's, it's a public highway. It's under, you know, town police can deal with any issues. That's not the planning board's issue. The planning board issue is, is the landing safe, which we looked at and it's been times. It's a safe landing. And we really can't deny it. We have to put all the restrictions on. We did. So I would like to ask that we can approve the resolution as amended.
So moved.
On favor. All right.
Brian? Okay. Thank you, guys.
Okay, entertain a motion for adjournment, unless anybody has any questions or issues. Otherwise. All right, okay.